As we're, as we're moving towards these goals, we set the baseline in the beginning of the year, and then you're trying to improve that at the end of the year. But it looked like the end of the year, are we actually going for MCA test scores or fast bridge improvements?
That's a super question. So, um, uh, in the world's best workforce, the only fast bridge goal is actually the early childhood one, and that's because there's no MCA there. But we use MCA scores for the third grade reading goal and for, uh, gap, gap closing goals, because tha- that's what the state metric revolves around. Uh, teachers, teacher teams, principals, and, um, all of us in administration are looking at that fast bridge data throughout the school year. So actually, just before this meeting, we had an MTSS SEL leadership team meeting, where we were looking at, um, district-wide, uh, fast bridge scores from the fall. Um, and those will continue to follow up with through the school year. They, they help us know how we're on track, um, and what changes we need to make along the way.
Does the, it's, we don't give fast bridge then in second grade?
Yes, uh, it's K through eight.
K through eight. So if we did a, the fast bridge test in second grade going into third grade, does that then inform, uh, the services, the extra help, et cetera, or do you?
Yes, that's right. All the way along, as soon as it's given in kindergarten, that helps us, uh, helps teachers, uh, plan their lessons. It helps us make decisions about interventions and, and full, uh, class interventions as well.
One of the things that I want, oh.
I had one last question, or did you want to?
I just wanted to add, yeah, I wanted to add something on that. So, um, the MCAs are the end of the year, right? So it's that summative assessment of what students have learned throughout the year. As Chris Lynn shared, the importance of the three times a year of the fast bridge is so that teachers and administrators have data ongoing to see, yep, what are those interventions? Are they working? Enrichments, are they working? Um, what else do we need to pay attention to, so that we're not waiting until the end to see what that MCA data is?
And that was kinda, so I had a two-part question with the last one, because obviously, um, we, you know, the, the issue of, of participation in the MCA scores.
Yes.
Whereas the fast bridge, I don't, are, do we have the same percentage of, of students opting out of that, or?
There's a very low percentage of students not taking the fast bridge, partially because regardless of what learning model a student might be in, the fast bridge can be taken online. So whether students at home or in school, everyone can take it. So that's one barrier that's not present with fast, fast bridge.
Because of the low participation rate this year, and I, and I, and I remember from way back when, I mean, there's a lot of 11th graders that simply don't even show up that day. So you do get a trailing pers- participation in the MCAs, but since we do have the fast bridge, uh, given the lower percentage, um, did you see the, did you see equal, uh, between the MCAs just, uh, and the fast bridge this time?
That's such a great question.
Put that gap together.
Yeah, so actually, we were just looking at those scores from fast bridge earlier, as I was saying, and, um, the scores, um, or the information that you get from fast bridge tells about student skills that they have and, and need to be able to access the content. And the MCA scores tell us about if a student mastered that con- concept or content. So the fast bridge scores we actually saw were, uh, surprised us as, and that they were as high as they were. So, uh, like, one thing that we might be able to infer from that is students have skills and they're ready to learn and get that content. So, I mean, inconclusive at the moment, but it's a really interesting question.
Yeah, that's kinda, because I kinda understand the MCA is being hard to take during a pandemic, it, they're, you know, in general. But then if we had the fast bridge to make that up, how much did that inform us of that skill set? So, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Michael.
Just quickly, thank you for putting the slide in by breaking down students in AP classes by student group. So did I interpret correctly that, for the most part, we have pretty good representation from each group in our AP classes?
We do.
Fabulous. Thank you.
And I just want to kinda add on to what Mary was saying. So, I know we've done fast bridge, refresh my memory, last two years, three?
Yeah, this is your, uh, two.
Two. Um, there's a, uh, I'm just wondering about the linkage between that and MCA as compared to what we used to have. I mean, I know, uh, as, as an indicator, we went with something that was more aligned with MCAs, correct?
They're both nearly equally the same amount of alignment between, uh, scores in NWEA MAP, which is what we used to use, and fast bridge. So they both have like a point eight correlation coefficient. So that means they're highly, uh, correlated from fast bridge scores, uh, you know, to project what those MCA scores might be. But again, like, it's a, it's a prediction. It's, yep.
But frequency, I'm just trying to remember, frequency, we're doing it three times a year.
Yes, that's right.
So the be, the ability to react and change, it seems like it's more than.
Yeah, we weren't as consistent with NWEA. We had some schools and some grade levels doing it three times of the year, but when we brought fast bridge onboard, that's a, that's an expectation.
We went the whole way, K through.
Yep, that's an expectation.
And some of that had to do with the, just the amount of time in testing. The NWEA MAP took a lot, like, much, much longer to take, so it became unwieldy and, um, not as efficient for classroom and teaching.
Um, as far as, I'm trying to remember the calendar, coming back through this for what's happening, that, because this is results from last year, as what's happening, um, as we go forward throughout the year, is there touch points at some point that we are going to be having, and how are things going? I mean, I, I guess I'm kinda leading to the fact that, okay, the kids are in school five days a week, we're back to somewhat as normal as we're gonna get, you know, normal year, and so, where, if, you know, if we're gonna see improvements?
Yeah, so, um, when the winter, uh, window closes, uh, in January, then, uh, the next opportunity I'll be presenting, uh, the progress on that and where we are in the school year.
So as of this fall, like, what, what's happening?
Yes, you'll see fall and winter data, um, in the winter.
Okay.
And just a reminder, um, and I know you all know this, but I just want to reiterate it. Our building instructional leadership teams are looking at this data, um, constantly with their principals. Our learning team, so all of our teachers that are on the same learning team, third grade teachers that are together, they're constantly looking at, not just the fast bridge data, but what's the fresh data of assessments or lessons that student had, um, that particular week. So it's all part of that whole cycle of continuous improvement. As Chris Lynn noted, this really is our state accountability system. Um, that is through legislation that we're required to report on, um, and certainly serves a purp- a purpose on our district dashboard. But as she said, uh, there's a lot of other indicators, including that student experience. And I think tonight we had a great example of seeing the student experience, both with our Hamilton Ridge Rangers, as well as our, um, high school students who are involved in the arts.
Okay. Oh, Jonathan?
Um, Kristen, can you unpack the participation? This is just always something that's in my craw, a little bit. I mean, it was really low. I mean, and I understand, elaborate for me. Can you unpack what's going on there?
Sure. So I can even, uh, go back to those slides, which were up in the top. So those, um, look like this. Uh, so, one thing about the spring, um, uh, MCA last year is that some students had chosen online learning. So, uh, if a student had chosen online learning and they were learning from home, they certainly had the option to come in, but families had chosen it so that they didn't come in. So those students were then automatically not testing. So that was part one. Um, part two, some students, depending on the learning model at the time, had been in, in hybrid, um, or had, uh, you know, at different points, everyone had been at home. Um, but then families had chosen that they didn't want their students to test. So that was another factor with participation rates. Uh, I mean, those were the main two.
Yeah, I'll just publicly just ask parents, it is such a valuable and important thing for us as a district to see what those numbers are. And I understand everybody makes decisions that they think is best for themselves. Um, I hope we can make decisions about what's best for the greater good, because we just need kids to test. And it'll help us gain a better idea of where we are. Last year was different, obviously, for a lot of different reasons. The one thing I wanted to ask about fast bridge, um, in looking at the school readiness, you mentioned this is our, you know, we had two years. Um, how did, did you see any marked difference in how prepared our kids were from the numbers we had with the prior tools?
Oh, that's a great question. So, um, I was not, uh, part of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools when there were different tools being used, and those tools were, uh, like, in-house designed. And so I don't have whole district data to look back on, um, to be able to compare or to, to be able to present where students might have been, as well as, because it was homegrown, there's no proficiency cut scores. So even if I had that data available, it wouldn't be a good indicator of.
So good that we're using, good that we're making the change, yep.
Are you done, Jonathan?
Yeah.
Mary?
Um, I had one more question, and, and, uh, just to try to understand this. In the third grade, um, you know, one of the assumptions I've always made is that's, the, the reason why the reading score in third grade is so important is because that's the time the students learn, uh, change from learning to read to reading to learn. Is that assumption still valid, uh, as of that pivotal point of, of, uh, students' learning, particularly as they go forward?
I'd actually have to consult with a reading expert on that to be able to answer that properly.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to follow up on Jonathan's statement, um, about the, the importance, and I'm really glad you pointed out the context, um, of both the pandemic, but certainly of the change in the number of, um, students who, who were tested. I think it's really important, then, when we're comparing year-to-year data, we're also looking at that participation rate. Because if 99% of our students took it in 2019, and you can see what those scores were, and 68% of our students took it, and we had a significant dip, um, I think there's just a lot of story beneath that story. So to just say that our scores dipped X percent isn't the whole story. I think you've got to add the pandemic in that. You've got to add of those who were tested and make sure that those comparisons are as well. So that's one of the dangerous things when you use just test scores or just one MCA score to make judgments, and that's why we don't. That's why our principals work really hard on triangulating data. Our teachers work really hard on that. So it's not just one data point. So just wanted to call that out as well.
And just to reiterate, I mean, it's across the board. We aren't alone here. And we saw that in the, everything being presented here. It is a function of the pandemic.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Chris Lynn? Um, next up is, uh, American Education Week recognition. Um, and this is the proclamation for American Education Week, November 15th through the 19th. So we at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools proclaim, um, recognition for an American Education Week, whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they'll need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellect abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, administrators or clerical staff, bus drivers or media specialists, children nutrition staff or support staff, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas our district, the community hub, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in common enterprise. Now therefore, the Prior Lake Savage Area Board of Education does hereby proclaim, November 15th through the 19th, 2021, as the 100th annual, um, observance of American Education Week. So with that, we proclaim that and thank, obviously, all of our employees for doing what they do each and every day. So, um, and then I think, last thing up for new business is the Safe Learning Plan update, and it's a report, only with Kate.
Good evening, everyone. We did have a, a decrease in our Scott County, um, case rate for the week ending 10/23. However, our preliminary numbers for the week ending October 30th are 52.34. We will get those final numbers tomorrow. When looking at our zero to 19-year-old age range, this makes up about 27.61 cases in Scott County. And this graph represents just the month of October. The highest proportion of cases are happening in our five to 11-year-olds, making up 45% of the total COVID cases, um, in the zero to 19-year-old range in Scott County. Unfortunately, at PLSAS, we're also seeing a sharp increase in our COVID cases. Please keep in mind that there's a 10-day lag in the Scott County data, so that it doesn't always mirror what's happening in the community. And unfortunately, um, we were hopeful that the increase would just, was just because of MEA break, and we would see a decrease this week. Unfortunately, we continue to see a sustained increase in the number of COVID cases that are being reported in our schools. As a result, today, we pulled together a subgroup of our Incident Command team. Our Incident Command team not only looks at our community transmission rates, but also our school COVID-19 cases, our influenza-like illness absences, our number of students that are out due to household quarantines, and our staff absence rates. Similar to Scott County cases, we are seeing that increase in our cases, especially at our elementary school sites. If Prior Lake Savage Area Schools had three cases reported in a classroom within 14 days, we said that we would call together a subgroup of our Incident Command team, as well as the, uh, building principal to talk about it. We look at the cases reported to a closer extent to determine if the student was infectious while they were in the classroom. And if we see a pattern that suggests transmission occurred in the classroom, we're looking at additional mitigation strategies, including moving that classroom to distance learning to immediately stop transmission that's happening in the classroom. We did have three classrooms in the elementary schools that reported, uh, three or more cases. And sadly, we did have to move one of those classrooms, um, to distance learning today. We have increased mitigation at these sites, um, and we are hopeful not to see, um, continued high sustained rates. Uh, we're hopeful, while we are seeing a high number of cases linked to household transmission, we are seeing that high number of cases reporting in our building, where we just can't determine where transmission's occurring. We continue to closely monitor COVID-19 cases, especially cases reported in the same classroom and in the same building. Leaders and myself will be meeting tomorrow to discuss ongoing mitigation efforts that can be implemented while we're seeing this increase in our COVID-19 case rates. If additional mitigation strategies are needed, we will, we will be communicating to our families and our staff. Tomorrow, COVID-19 testing will be available to our families. Tests will be Zoom-enabled with a Vault testing supervisor. The tests are PCR tests, meaning that they will react to small components of DNA in the tests collected in saliva. They are considered the gold standard of testing. These tests will take 24 to 48 hours to be processed in the lab once received. The tests have to be returned to the DSC Monday through Friday. The tests can be placed in the District Service Center Dropbox after hours, Monday through Thursday. But our last pickup will be 2:00 PM on Friday, so no pickup over the weekends or after 2:00 PM on Friday. Results from these tests will not be shared with the school, and testing is completely voluntary. Testing continues to be not a requirement to return to school. The tests will be distributed from the school health office. Along with testing, Scott County will be doing another vaccination event, as the CDC and FDA have approved the Pfizer vaccination for emergency use in our five to 11 age group. The opportunities will be held at our Hidden Oaks School, November 16th and 17th, as well as December 8th and 14th. Dates are not exactly three weeks apart to ensure all Scott County schools are able to offer two vaccination dose opportunities prior to winter break. Parents must be present and must sign consent to receive the vaccination. The COVID-19 vaccination is not one of the required vaccinations to attend school. Any questions?
Just like to add a couple of things, if that's right, before questions. Um, first of all, uh, thank you, Kate, very much for continuing to track that. Um, I know Kate called us together this afternoon to, uh, make decisions about the cases that were moving forward. Um, this presentation looks different than what you saw on Friday when she submitted it in Board Book because of the increase in cases that we've experienced across the district. Um, just wanted to remind everyone that we did say earlier this summer, um, at that time, we said that we were not planning on moving forward with the MDE grant, um, to provide voluntary testing, um, and, and actually stated at this time, we are not doing that. And then, as we said to you recently, we, uh, changed decisions and decided that we wanted to be sure that we had that opportunity for our families, again, voluntary. No one has to do it. It certainly needs, uh, parent consent, but we wanted to be sure that we, um, spoke about that change. Um, and then also, as we're hearing some of the Scott County numbers, I just wanted to remind you all that I'm in constant contact, uh, like, in the last, uh, half hour before the board meeting. Uh, as recent as that, with some area superintendents who are experiencing the same thing. The cli- the case rates in schools are increasing. Um, they're also having to move some classrooms to distance learning and also looking at, uh, their masking requirements and, um, changes that may need to be made, and we'll be doing that same thing at Incident Command, uh, this week.
Question, Mary?
Um, on slide three, could you, um, let me get it, get there first. Yeah, there, uh, the, there, that num- yeah, are those numbers cumulative, or are they just recent?
October.
Just the month of October?
Correct.
Okay. Um, now, we had that dial that we were using last year. Where are we on that in the county as far as the number of cases per 10,000?
That's not being used anymore. You know, Minnesota Department of Health put that in place, um, last year.
Was more with this number here.
Yep, so, so that is something. And again, if you recall, when we brought the matrix forward, um, in August, we used some of those numbers, and we're continuing to look, especially at that 50 number at the, at the county level. That was the place last year where we really started seeing, when our, when our rates got above 50 at the county level, that's when we really started seeing some staffing challenges. What's changed significantly since then has been, you know, especially the availability of vaccines. So we haven't seen as many staff cases. Um, but, yeah, that, that dial piece that the state put in place and we were required, and required to follow or work with Minnesota Department of Health has changed, and districts really are determining now what those metrics are. But this is certainly something that we continue to look at, knowing that, that, at that over 50, um, that's certainly a concern area for us. Thank you.
I want to pull this up too. As you can see, our staff cases really haven't changed. That number's pretty consistent. And again, this week, we're still staying pretty consistent with what we're seeing.
Now, last year, we did offer, um, the staff and, uh, other members to get vaccinated. Are we going to do the same thing with the booster?
We are not. Um, I did talk to Scott County about that. It is so widely available right now that they are not, they're focusing on the five to 11 age group and getting that out versus the booster.
Okay, thanks.
I, I was just, from my memory, a year ago, if we were over 50, we were all at distance. Am I not right about that?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Questions? I, Kate, I have one. Um, the notification process for testing results on the Vault, I know they have to bring it here, but how is the household or person notified? Is that?
So when you get a Vault test kit, you have to create an account, and then you'll actually meet a Vault representative who will walk you through the test. And then the test is emailed to whatever email you put on there. It does not come back to the school.
Okay, so meet a Vault person, like Zoom-wise, you meet?
Yep, you will meet someone via Zoom. They'll walk you through the test, and then you'll bring it back, but the results will not be shared with the school.
Okay, I was just worried about that.
And is, is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, is there, is any data, aggregated data, nothing is shared with the school?
If there is a positive result, it would be shared by law with Minnesota Department of Health.
Okay.
But again, that Zoom representative just also helps with consent to make sure that if it is someone under 18, they witness that the parent is giving consent.
Mm-hmm. But none of that data is going to come back to us. It's going to the state.
That is correct.
And then I just wanted to confirm. So as far as the, um, shots being offered, the vaccination event at Hidden Oaks, um, no registration or anything? You just come?
There is a signup link.
Okay.
That will be shared, or was shared. Was it shared already, Chris? Yes, it was shared. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yep, and so there's, I think, 20 slots per, I think they're spaced out by eight or nine minutes, and there's 20 slots per, um, time, anywhere between 3:00 and 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And again, parents have to give consent when they sign that link, and they have to be present at the vaccination event.
Perfect. Um, any other questions?
I, I'm, I guess, comment, I had a conversation with a parent a couple hours before the meeting, someone who called me, um, and asking about some of that. I, I hope that he is listening, because he was asking about the, the clinic and how that's working. I think these are answering all of those questions.
Yeah, I kinda, I would like to actually speak to that. Um, there was, um, some misinformation shared during a press conference, or I shouldn't say misinformation, it was true, um, where, um, the commissioner said parents may or may not have to be present at the vaccination event. Regardless of if a parent was required to be present at the vaccination event, consent would be required.
Yes.
So similarly, if a grandparent had to bring us, you know, a child to the doctor's office for a procedure, consent would still have to go back to the parent.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanna thank Kate and thank our leaders who are coming together, um, on, on very short notice to make some really hard decisions. Um, hopefully, we're all continuing to take whatever precautions we can. Our goal, as you know, Board, from the beginning of this year, has been for our students and staff to be in-person learning five days a week. And I know we've got a lot of people that are working really hard to make that happen, and, um, you know, these, uh, spikes in cases aren't anything that we want to see. So we're taking them seriously and trying to do whatever mitigation strategies we can to keep our kids in school five days a week, learning with their teachers and staff. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is policy. Um, the first reading of the policy is the 400 and that are listed in front of you, as well as the 902. Um, this is the second time they've been on the, um, board packet. The last time, um, we went one by one. Um, I didn't get any feedback from anyone over the last couple of weeks. Um, is there any comments or questions, or anything on any of those? Okay, seeing none. All right, okay. Those will go forward, uh, for the next time to get their second read. And then, um, there are no second reading of policies, uh, tonight. Um, board policy approval, these have been on the agenda for four times. We haven't made any comment on them the last two. Um, if anyone has any comments or anything, I'll look to people wanting to approve in a bunch or individually?
Bunch.
Bunch? Okay. Pretty good with that? Okay. Um, so I'm looking for, um, a motion to approve policy 402, disability non-discrimination. Policy 532, international students. Policy 702, accounting. Policy 704, development, maintenance of inventory, fixed assets, and fixed asset accounting. Policy 705, investments. Policy 713, student activity accounting. Do I have a motion to approve those policies as listed?
So made.
By Mary, second by Enrique. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero.
Six.
Six, I'm sorry, you're right. Six zero. Um, next up is administrative reports, the superintendent report.
Thank you very much. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. Our collective work is focused on that mission. I'd like to update you on just a few things in which we've been engaged, uh, to work toward that. First of all, kindergarten enrollment, we're already talking about. Uh, although it feels like the year has just started, uh, gotten underway, we're already looking forward to the 2022-23 school year and welcoming incoming kindergarten families. We'll be kicking off the enrollment season on December 2nd, when we will host a kindergarten information session at Redtail Ridge at 6:00 PM. We'll also be live streaming the event, so families have the option to, uh, watch it from home if they prefer. This will be the first opportunity for families to learn about Prior Lake Savage Area Schools kindergarten. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools kindergarten experience from our elementary principals, who will share a general overview of the program and share information about the La Ola de Lago Spanish immersion option as well. Then for prospective families who are interested in the Spanish immersion and want more specific information, an in-person event will be held at La Ola de Lago at Greenwood on December 7th at 7:00 in the Media Center. Families will have a chance to talk to principal and teachers to learn more about what that program looks like. And then official online registration opens on January 13th, 2022. As we stated in the resolution, I also want to draw attention to American Education Week, which is next week, November 15th through the 19th. It is a time to celebrate our public school community. We honor the team of people who work in our buildings, everyone from our bus drivers and classroom teachers to the cafeteria workers and administrative staff, plus the countless others. It's also a time to help recognize the importance of public education and the accomplishment of our students. I'd like to thank our Prior Lake Savage Area School staff, along with the many parent volunteers and community partners who support us all year long, especially in the last couple of years where education has definitely been made more difficult by the pandemic. And lastly, I know several of you were also able to attend, but I was able to attend MinCaps last week to participate in their annual healthcare students psychology fair exhibits. There were about two dozen experiments that showcased throughout the day that pertain to psychology and the attendings were able to actually participate as subjects. I was involved in a sleep study, or not a study, but it was a memory. And they were looking at the amount of sleep and how that impacts memory. I told them I thought it was far more about age in my memory than the sleep that I had gotten. So they did a great job. That was really fun to see the students in action, did a great job presenting and sharing their research. So that's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, administrative reports, none this evening, it looks like. Okay, I'm going to start with Avery, the Student Council Board Report.
Hello, everyone. My name is Avery Fable. I'm filling in for Bella Drews today. We are wrapping up the quarter at Prior Lake High School this Thursday. So something we've been participating, starting this month, is our No Shade November fundraiser for men's health organizations. We're just wrapping up everything, preparing for next quarter's activities. We're starting organizing our winter dance committees and planning those types of things. They'll be held in the early months of 2022. A handful of our students actually just got back from a leadership forum that we went to this past weekend. We learned about our individual learning styles and how we can contribute to our team and our community. We heard many ideas that we can implement in our school, in our council, and our community as a whole. And we had an amazing keynote speaker. His name is Keith Hawkins, if you can check him out on social media. He was an amazing speaker, said a lot of things that stuck with me and all the people who went up there as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice show. All right, board reports, anybody have board reports? I know we had EMSD on Friday. I was there, I missed it, but Michael was there.
I have less of a report and it may be a request. Scale is on Friday. I may be attending, but it would be with AirPods in on my phone from a deer stand. So if anybody wants to go to Scale this weekend.
Talk to Jonathan.
Talk to me.
Future events, future events are as follows. November 11th, the end of the first quarter. November 12th, no school, grades E through 12. November 15th through 19th, American Education Week. And I did forget to note that Martha put a nice little calendar, so everybody has that. Just look for that at your board table there. November 22nd, the board study session here at 6:00. And with that, we are going to have a closed session in accordance with the open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D03, for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. So I will adjourn this regular meeting and then we will transition to the closed meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? By Enrique, second?
Second.
By Mary, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That will be adjourned and we'll take a five-minute break. And that's six zero, thank you.